Good evening. Welcome to the Lakeville Area Schools Board of Education Meeting. I'm Judy Kelleher, Board of Education Chair, and the meeting is called to order, and I ask the audience members to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following board members are in attendance. We have Kathy Lewis, Sinta Schmitz, Terry Lind, Dave Anderson, and Robin Richards. Also in attendance is our Superintendent Dr. Doug Van Zyle and our Executive Cabinet Members, Dr. Emily McDonald, Tony Maseras, Bill Holmgren, Stephanie Cass, and Dave Haveman. So with that, good news, Superintendent.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. We've got several items on here this evening. First of all, Christine Huddleston Elementary, they celebrated 40 years, and that was on November 16th. Past and present students, retired staff, along with our families and community, attended that 40th anniversary of Christine Huddleston Elementary. Attendees toured the school and celebrated with our current school staff, and that was a good event. I happened to pop over that, so I appreciate them doing that. Also, congratulations goes out to the Lakeville North High School Girls Volleyball Team on their second-place finish in the Class 3A, 4A Girls Volleyball State Tournament. The Panthers competed in the championship game against Wayzata. Trojans on Saturday, November 12th, did an outstanding job. I happened to see that as well, and they competed excellently and represented us well. Also, congratulations to Lakeville North Boys Cross Country Team on their third-place finish at Class 3A Boys Cross Country State Tournament on Saturday, November 5th at St. Olaf College. And congratulations to North Senior Andrew Casey, who finished in the top 10. So that's outstanding. I'm not a runner. I just know that that's... I'll drive that far. I probably won't run that far. So congratulations on that.
Mr. Run, can you believe it?
Absolutely.
Good answer.
Terry runs all the time. He knows what to be out.
That's right. Lakeville South Girls, congratulations to their tennis team and their coaching staff for being recognized as Section 1 AA Coaches of the Year. So Coach Ann Strider received Head Coach of the Year Award, and Assistant Coaches Neil Strider and Michael Cole, I believe, is that how you pronounce his last name? Did I get that right? All right. Won the Assistant Coaches of the Year Award. So congratulations to them. Outstanding job. The first swimming unit being taught at Century Middle School, that very first unit is now being taught in physical education classes at the Century Middle School. And let me adjust my word, so I can make sure I can read it. And our 6th and 7th grade boys are almost done with their two-week pool unit, and the girls will follow. Students are learning the basic swimming skills and water safety. This is the first time that the three middle schools, jump page, in the district have access to the swimming unit and in the physical education class. The Blanchard Aquatic Center opened in May of 2022. So thanks to the community for their support on that. So a lot of great things taking place in and out of our schools.
All right. Thank you. And so we have some board communications for this evening. Prior to this evening, we had a stakeholder session, and a couple of follow-up items that will be done is Dr. Van Zyle is going to have our, the board, School Board Code of Ethics just reviewed to make sure how it fits into social media and the other components of board member behavior behind the table and out in the community, and making sure that all of that is aligned. And we are also, Dr. Van Zyle and Dr. McDonald are going to follow up on some SEL and curriculum and curriculum resource questions that were raised. And so they will be following up on that. So for that, we thank the people that attended and registered for our stakeholder session this evening, and they will be hearing from the administration with those follow-up action items. And then the other thing, just to make sure that everybody is aware, the Board of Education is going to continue to host two stakeholder sessions per month on the 3rd and 4th Tuesdays. So the sessions are scheduled for the 3rd Tuesday of the month prior to the board work session, and the 4th Tuesday of the month prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. So just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. And a little piece of good news from the board is we all want to wish you a happy birthday, Dr. Van Zyle.
I was going to mention that later on in my report, so you took that off my plate. So thank you.
We promise we will make it efficient and effective, so you can get home and celebrate with your wife.
It doesn't mean as much when you say it.
And then do we have any agenda additions?
No.
Nothing? Okay. So then approval of the agenda?
So moved.
We have approval by Lind, a second.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then consider approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to move anything, remove anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? All right. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Motion by Lewis. Is there a second?
No, that was by Sinta.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your voice. Sinta, but I will second her. Okay, so we have Schmitz with the motion, and Lewis with the second. Thank you. And I know we have some comments. We had some questions around policy, 2K on here, and there are three policies that are being updated. And if it's okay, I'm just going to read the issue paper that came out, because it really explains what's going on. And this was discussed during our work session that we had. So the Policy Committee and other staff members reviewed Policy 413, which is harassment and violence, and Policy 514, which is the bullying prohibition policy, to assure they continue to meet the needs of our students, staff, and families. It became apparent that the policies themselves aligned with the district goals and were in compliance with all legal requirements. However, it was determined that the administrative procedures for consistent and effective implementation of the policies was needed. To that end, the administration is piloting a student management handbook to accomplish those objectives, and an overview was shared with the board at its work session that we just had on November 15th. So only minor and non-substantiated edits are being made to these policies. And so regarding Policy 722, which is the public data request one, the recommended changes follow the MSBA model policy updates and legal advice, with a focus being on legal definitions, statutory language, and legal references, all of which reflect statutory provisions that school districts must follow. So for that reason, these are on the consent agenda, because they're very minor changes or legally required changes that align to MSBA policies and to the state statutes. So what's being worked on, and which was shared pretty extensively on our work session, and people can listen to that work session if they wish to, is the Student Management Handbook, and that's still a work in progress. So I hope that clears everything up. So with that, we have a motion by Schmitz, and a second by Lewis. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And so then we go to the report for the FY '23 budget update.
School Board Member, tonight we're just going to take another look at our budget. We had a discussion at our work session last week.
And just kind of hit some of the high points of what we had talked about. So first, I guess I just want to make the point that over the last few years, since 2018, we have had some deficit budgets, and they were planned that way. So when we are talking about the budget situation that we're in and needing to make some adjustments, this day we saw it coming. It wasn't, this isn't like a surprise. This is something that's been coming down the road here the last five years. And of course, the fund balance policy for the school board is to keep our fund balance at 5% or above, which we look at against our previous year's expenditures. So when we finished this past year, '22, see that we have dropped now, our fund balance has dropped down to 4%. So this puts us in a situation where we have to make some adjustments to turn this back and go back north and get above that 5% level. And then some of the factors that we are looking at that really have affected our budget, at least lately, because it really has accelerated a little bit on us in '22. One thing to remember is enrollment slightly decreased during the pandemic. And when we go out and we bring our levy forward to the public, we do an estimate on our enrollment. And remember, we had an increased enrollment, steady going up. At that time, I believe it was at 1.5%. But when it comes down, and we were less students that particular year, we've got to now give the money back. And that's what happened also in '22. Our revenue from our levy for enrollment actually decreased because of that negative adjustment in that particular year. Some of the added supportive programs are not sustainable, as you know, during that period of time. And then we had quite a bit of inflation effect pressure. We look at our utilities, our substitutes, our substitute costs have actually doubled over the last couple of years compared to where we were. And busing, another area where because of the increase in fuel, the way our contract is written, we actually share in those increased costs with the bus company, and we've never had to do that before. But now this past year and into the year that we're in, we are sharing those fuel costs.
And that's contractually?
Yes, it is contractual. And it's very common in school bus contracts across the state of Minnesota.
And we've just been very fortunate not to have to participate in the sharing side of it until now.
Right. So next steps. You know, we're looking at the new, our new budget. We're in '23 now, fiscal '23. We're about halfway through. And what can we do to make some adjustments in the situation that we're in? What can we do right now to help? So we've met with our principals and our department heads. We are cutting building and apartment budgets by 10%. Actually, that information went out to our buildings actually today to work on making those adjustments on their budgets. And we're looking at a hiring freeze, or at least a soft hiring freeze, that we don't have any new staff coming forward in the year that we're in. We're also looking at stakeholder involvement as we're making changes in our budget for next year. So we're building and putting together a community finance work group. And as you know, we need facility needs. We have to look at that and get ready for what we have coming on the road. So we're also building a community task force to look at our facility needs specifically for the increase enrollment that we continue to see coming down the next couple, the next few years. So when we look at '24, so the budget that needs to come forward to the board in June of '23, so about six months from now, there needs to be a change in our budget of approximately $7 million to have us turn this corner of deficit spending and get us flat. So we must present a balanced budget to the school board next June to take care of our situation. So we don't bring that fund balance lower than zero for us in that situation. So those are the things we talked about last week. So with that said, is there any questions?
Last week, we talked about staffing cuts. Is that going to be under cut building and department budgets, or do you not anticipate that we would need to cut staff?
When we look at our budget, 80% of our budget's staffing. So when we look at trying to move $7 million out of the budget, it's going to touch staffing in some way. We don't know. I mean, we have, we have a lot of work to do in the next few months to decide where that $7 million is going to come from. But I would think there will be some staffing changes. Again, I guess what I would like to say also is when you look at the volume of our general fund budget, and we talk about 7 million, that's actually a relatively small percentage of our budget.
That's what I was just asking.
It's about 3.5%.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, is it 2.5%?
Yeah, it's about 3.5%.
Okay.
So, so yes, 7 million is a big number, but at the same time, when you look at our budget, how large it is, about 3.5% is what we have to change going into fiscal '24.
I would also add to answer to your question a little bit. Really, what you try to do is take a look at, are there things that you can do through attrition, instead of just making full-blown cuts? If there's things you can do through attrition, any position that comes open, you take a look at, is this a duplication? Is it needed? Is there some other way that we can do this more efficiently or effectively? And as we kind of talked about at the work session, you really start at, what are those core components that you need for classroom instruction to take place, and then work your way out from there. So the other component that is probably a little bit different, and we are blessed as a district, even though we're facing this, is normally if you lose a staff member, you've been fortunate enough to be able to replace them with probably a veteran staff member, where normally in most districts, if you had a veteran staff member who retired or left, they're replaced with a new staff member, and there's some savings in your finances from that. Over the last few years, you haven't had that. You've really been fortunate enough to be able to replace veteran staff members with also fairly veteran staff members. So your savings has been a little bit different. Not that you fully enforce that 100%, but that's something that we can take a look at as well, is what is the gap between somebody who may be leaving or retiring, and how do we replace those staff members? So through attrition and the way that you also replace staff, you can get a pretty good chunk of that if you plan for it.
I was also going to ask the other night, have we called the state and asked them for some money from their surplus? I'm being serious.
So pull your microphone forward and...
Have we called the state and asked for some of their surplus?
I would say...
I'd be glad to call too.
The organizations that I work with, we definitely contact our legislators, and we ask for that specifically. There's actually not just give us cash, but there's definitely many, many, many things that we need as a school district that we ask for from the legislature every single time that we go through legislation or a budget year.
So I can say I haven't personally called them, but I know every group that goes and lobbies that we're a part of, that's one of the questions that they're asking is what's happening with that surplus? The challenge for us is again, it's a large chunk of money that the state has, but they also have to be mindful of, are they putting it in a reoccurring cost similar to what our fund balances are, or are they putting it in one-time funds? So there are multiple things that we can ask that they try to do, and I know our lobbyists from the special education formula to busing to, you know, there's multiple other things that we're asking. But it's also helpful if the community and parents remind their legislative body that education should be a main priority of the state. Used to be. I think Minnesota used to be one of the top-funded states in the nation, and now I want to say somebody told me we were at like 31st or 32nd. So it's a, it's a pretty quick slope from not that long ago being first to being 30th.
So and if I can just add to, December, we have coming up the MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Delegate Assembly, and I'm one of the delegates. Are you a delegate?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm a delegate, and I'll definitely be there. And their platform is to increase the basic education formula as well as fully fund the special education subsidy and a few other things, and really empower local decision-making. So that's the platform that we're going to be working on. So we will be there advocating, but it doesn't preclude us as individuals to reach out to our legislators too and do the same.
I have a question along that. Bill, with the money that comes in from our local tax base, can you help me... Bill, with the money that comes in from our local tax base, can you help me understand? Because I've seen a lot about how Lakeville is the lowest property tax in all of Dakota County. Does that come into play at all when we're seeing these huge, you know, deficits?
There's only a few ways that we can increase our revenue for the district. And one of those ways is to go out and ask for an operating levy, which, you know, we have some operating funds that we do have, but ours is very low compared to other districts around us. And actually, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. I have, I have some graphs that we can show as we compare.
Oh, we can't wait.
And I'd like to say Burnsville, where I'm at, is not as low as Lakeville.
And I would say part of it also is the makeup of your community to go with your question as well. Of course, if you're mostly heavily residential, your tax rate is lower than a business. Businesses get taxed at a higher rate. So if you have more businesses in your community, they're taxed at a higher rate, which then, of course, generates more revenue. And we're, we're fairly heavy residential.
Yes, we are.
In some of the items that are on. And it has to be this way to attract businesses. Sometime you have to TIF or put a tax increment financing in place for some of those companies. And some of those that we do have are on TIFs, and we monitor that and try to get them back on the books as soon as they can.
I'd like to make a comment.
Give the microphone, please.
Thank you. First of all, at the conference I was at a week ago for AMSD, they also were talking about this. They were also talking about the crossover subsidy and getting dollars for that. So that organization is also in line with trying to help out the funding. The other thing that I wanted to ask is it was my impression that the reason that we planned to some, or expected some of this deficit budgets was because back in 2000, I can't remember the year, but 16, 17, 18, 18 or whatever, we had quite a surplus. It was reaching the upper limit. And the discussion at that time was we couldn't be sitting on that much money and not using it. So therefore, because of the pandemic, we didn't go out for a referendum, an operating referendum, but also because we had really reached quite an upper limit. So it was more like, yes, it was deficit spending, but some of it was somewhat planned because we didn't feel that it was appropriate to just be banking a bunch of cash. And I may be wrong on that.
Well, no, that was, I think, referenced the first bullet point you had.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
That's what he was saying.
This was planned.
That's what he said.
We were planning to buy that down.
But that's, but that's why we were planning it. It wasn't just...
Back in, back in 18, I believe we were at 12.5%.
Yep. I think that's what it was, 12.5% or 13%.
So, yes, yep.
Just one question on one of the factors listed for the expenditures, was the substitutes, was that because substitutes aren't around and we have to pay them more? Is it because during the pandemic, we had a lot more substitutes because teachers were out? Combination?
It's actually both.
Oh, really?
Over the last few years, in order to get substitutes, yes, we have increased the rate that we pay our substitutes. And actually, I think we're doing a pretty good job at actually filling. Our fill rate's very high, I talked to Tony.
Fill rates would be, well, 90%. I'll be doing well there, but it's the, excuse me, it's the demand for subs.
The demand.
So what was, yeah, it was being, for those that didn't hear on camera, we're up to a fill rate of 90% on average with our subs. So we're getting a pretty decent fill rate.
Yes, most of the time during...
Compared to most districts.
During the week, as we need a sub, most of the time we're filling that sub with a third party.
Okay.
Okay, so Terry and I'll fill in the rest of the time.
There you go.
Right. Terry, you and I will fill in for the rest of the...
So Bill, with the hiring freeze, you know, as we look into the second semester, is that going to, do you project that that could help to impact the $7 million number for the school, you know, the financial year '24? That if there are positions that aren't able, like, aren't refilled, or that if you see that there are class sizes increasing, that there can be a shuffle of staffing within different locations?
Any, any type of savings that we find in the current year that we're in is like a head start for next year.
On that $7 million?
Into that $7 million.
Okay.
And to part of your question, we have to be mindful because part of our negotiated agreements only allow certain movement. And once somebody's in a position, it's hard to move them to another position. So I'm not saying it can't be done, and that may be some dialogue we have with our association reps to say, is there some flexibility to try this to see if, if we have? I'll use special education, for example, and Dave can throw something at me if he wants. You know, if we have higher caseloads in one school than projected, and another school has much lower, right now, we don't have the ability to take that lower position and bring them over to help support because of the way the contract is written. And there's pluses and minuses to that. The minus is, then if you are way over, you got to try to find a staff member to fill that, which then adds to the costs that go up. But it also creates some stress for teachers if they have to move from one position to another because they prefer stability, as I don't disagree with that. So there's, there's a give and a take in that process. So it does give us a head start, but there's some things that kind of anchor us to where we are right now. The only other thing that I would say is when we're lobbying, it's just not additional money into the formula. There really needs to be a conversation about how does it meet with the inflation that takes place? Because as we've shown you before, they've put dollars into the formula. It just hasn't been done at a rate that is substantial enough to meet the inflationary costs that are there. So the gap actually continues to widen. If you remember that graph, I think that Bill has shown you before. So the state's been putting money in, don't get me wrong, and trying to help education. The challenge is it hasn't kept up to the demand of what gets placed on school districts and the burden of the inflationary costs.
Mm-hmm. All right.
It's not just part of the formula. We need a, like a one-time check. You need something to balance it.
Yeah.
Something to right-size it and then continue from there. Because you just can't have a one-time influx of money, because then all it does is create another funding cliff if there's not money to fund it the following year. So you get $7 million to offset what we need, but they don't give you $7 million. The next year, you're right back to where you were the year before. So it has to be a continual spend.
Yep.
And I guess I would just add this, if you don't mind, unless somebody else has other questions. You know, when people hear this, sometimes they'll freak out. Our job is not to say, hey, we're going to cut all these positions, we're going to do this. I've been in districts where we've had to cut five, eight, $10 million out of it, but it's not fun. It's not something that we enjoy. But we also sometimes can find out where maybe we have some inefficiencies or duplications, so it can actually make us a little bit better in some of our processes. And so I don't want people to freak out thinking, well, I'm not going to have a job, I'm not going to, they're going to do this. It could get to that if things get worse, you know, if, for some reason, we're not able to close the gap and we get to almost 0% fund balance, it's going to be real painful. What we just need to do now is get input direction and proactively plan so we can try to meet these needs. So, you know, I've tried to share with staff, and we're going to send a message out to them again. You know, we're not standing on the edge of the cliff with our toes over it, but we can see the edge of the cliff from where we're at. Our job is to then work to prog, to make our progress back away from the edge of the cliff so that we continue to provide what we need to provide for our students and our staff and our families. Because you don't want Lakeville area schools, nor do I, to be thought of less than what they are. You want them to continue to grow and develop. And at some point, that may mean we have to go back out to the community and say, here's what we've done. Now we may need X to be able to continue doing what we're doing.
One more question. Yes? Just to piggyback off that, when you say what we've done, just to put the community at ease when you're going over these building and department budget cuts, would you be able to present like a tangible number so that people can kind of see what we're, what we're cutting out and how much we're saving? Does that make sense?
Well, I'm sure, yeah. When we come back to you in a couple of months and start talking about '24's budget, we'll be, we'll be talking about what we see as adjustments that can be made to fix our situation. So you'll have the detail of what, what those things are. At this point, we don't know what they are yet.
Right. And I'll say this, you're not, we're not going to be able to say, well, we're not going to give pencils and papers to kids or teachers. That's not going to solve this budget issue. That's, the 10% is not really a, it's a big number in probably our own checkbooks and bank accounts, but in the full budget of what we address, it's not a big number. We just have to know that we've got to have a little bit of skin back in the game from ourselves to be able to say, is there something else we can do? And then we sit down, we'll sit down with each administrator and say, okay, here's what we're looking at. Here's what your 10% means. What are those areas that could be impacted by that? We're really not going to try to remove things that impact a large number of students. We're going to look for, are there things that we can do more efficiently or effectively? How, you know, just an example I'll use, may not be a great example, but having gone through this when I was an elementary principal, you know, one of the things was, hey, we're cutting some supply budgets. And we walked around and we had cabinets full of construction paper. I'm like, why, why do we keep ordering construction paper if we have cabinets full of construction paper? They're like, well, we use orange, but we don't use all these other colors. I'm like, then just order orange. And I'm not saying our folks are doing that, but, but there's things that sometimes we take for granted that may be things we can do more efficiently, more effectively to help curb some of those dollars and help us be efficient for, in how we use our stakeholders' dollars.
Yep. So, any other questions? All right. Well, there's more to come. We'll continue to have this dialogue and discussion, and appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Recommended action for this evening is the approval of the '22-24 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Lakeville Area Schools and Lakeville Association of School Administrators. Tony, is this one of your last presentations?
Well, if all goes as planned, I'll have another recommendation in December for another collective bargaining agreement. We do have tentative agreement with our custodial group as well.
Oh, excellent.
Well, that's excellent.
So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that vote, which we should have in anticipation.
Well, good news. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah. So tonight, Chair Kelleher, members of the board, Superintendent Van Zyle, presenting a recommendation for approval of the 2022-24 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the district and LASSO. LASSO is our building administrators, our principals, our deans, assistant principals. We went through several rounds of negotiations on this. This, this contract negotiation, I think like a lot of the other ones coming off of the last few years, was probably a little more difficult than it's been in the past, but we got there. I'd like to thank Dr. McDonald. She was part of the team representing the board and administration. Bill Holmgren also, of course, helped us out on, on the financial pieces. Representing LASSO is Joshua Alexander, who's principal at McGuire, Wade Labatt, principal at Oak Hills, Kim Booty, who's principal at Lakeville North, and Becky Erickson, who's a dean at McGuire. I think through some good discussion and compromise, we reached agreement that was, that is fair and fiscally responsible while also recognizing the excellent work and dedication of this group of administrators. So the details are provided in the materials. There's not a whole lot there. It's a salary increase is annually a 3% effective July 1, 2022 and 2023. We added salary schedules for the elementary assistant principals that we've put in in three buildings due to the increased enrollment. And we put in annual stipends to recognize the work that our high school deans do in terms of supervision. And finally, we put in an MOU for clarification of the administrator roles and responsibilities relating to the P3 and gaggle systems that you're familiar with relating to threat assessments, so everybody knows what's expected and the roles that they, they play in that. So with that, that's basically what we have in this agreement, and we're recommending your approval of it. The LASSO membership approved it on November 7.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Lewis.
Second.
Second by Lind. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. And thank you for your work on that. And the superintendent's report.
Good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity. Just a couple of items. Just want to remind folks that we do not have school for our students the next couple of days due to the Thanksgiving holiday. Our staff are in tomorrow for professional development, so hopefully everybody will have a safe and relaxing holiday. Also did want to point out that we did post on our website, and I think an email, if it hasn't gone out, is going out to folks regarding, number one, the winter weather reminders for people to take a look at, because thankfully, the snow that we got last week wasn't quite to the level that caused the staff to not have school, but they could be coming. I think Minnesota's known to have cold weather and snow, so we're getting that information out for people to take a look at. Also, we had sent information out on the joint task force, one related to facilities, one related to finance. These are not standing board committees. These are being put together administratively for Bill and I to help facilitate and get some input and feedback from our community, so we'll lead those. There are posted dates and times along with an application process for people to be able to fill those out and be involved in that as well. Also did want to mention that the inclusionary practice nominations, I think that's the right name. Did I say that right, Dave? Inclusionary awards. That email went out for special education, and we are seeking nominations for those as well. It's something that, as a district, has gone on nine years. Is that right, Kim? So it's been nine years. It's been a great thing. And so we're looking for those nominations for people to turn those in as well. So hopefully, people will get involved in that and make some great nominations. Also wanted to update you on the school naming process for a ninth elementary school. I'm not telling you the name, but our students did have the opportunity to be involved in that. And Steph Cass and her team are going to put together kind of a little video compilation of some students involved, and we'll share that with you for your approval next month. I told Bill where, where I think it's going, so he kind of has an idea for paperwork, but it's not until it's your approval. It's not, it's not anything earth-shattering, so. But it was kind of a cool process. I think our kids and staff liked it, so. And you already said something about my birthday, so you took away my thunder from that one as well. But it's not a big birthday, no.
Cinta was going to sing, but she lost her voice. You're going to have to come back for this.
That's all right. That's okay. I already had cake. One of our things is we have cake for breakfast, so my wife and I had cake for breakfast. So I've been on a sugar rush, which I'm coming off of this evening, so I'll go home and have another piece of cake and make it through the rest of the night. So any questions for me on anything?
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. And thank our community for joining our meeting and being engaged. And these can be viewed live on cable channel 188, livestreamed on the district website, and watched on demand via the recording meetings that are posted on the website. And at this time of year where we give lots of thanks, thanks to our incredible students and our staff, to our engaged parents in our community, our incredible executive cabinet and our administration, we are really grateful for all of you, and I am grateful for the board's members that I get to be working with every day. So with that, we want to thank everybody. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is December 13. And as soon as I get a motion for adjournment, in a second, we can get Dr. Van Zyle home to that cake. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
There was a motion by Cinta. And a second by Robin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone. Have a wonderful and restful holiday.